Let's call this meeting to order. Welcome all to the July 21st meeting of the Bloomfield Township Planning Commission. Just in case somebody's here for the first time and doesn't know who we are, what we do. The Planning Commission is a seven-member body. It's appointed by the Bloomfield Township Board of Trustees per the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act. The Planning Commission is an advisory or recommending body to the Board of Trustees, who always have the right, the final authority of approval in matters involving site plan review and land use development. We have three items on the agenda tonight: a public hearing, a site plan review, Oakland Veterinary Services, two public meetings, slight difference, Birmingham Athletic Club, and a new car wash at 1933 Telegraph Road. Just so you know, we have seven, there's a seven-member board. We need four members, no matter how many people are here, we need four members to vote in the affirmative for anything to be, to be sent along positively to the Township Board of Trustees. And so, we do have a quorum tonight. We have seven members, we have a quorum of four, but we have six out of seven here, so we can do business. And the first item on the agenda would be approval of the minutes of, what do you mean, of the July 7th meeting. We've all had an opportunity to read them. Any corrections or any comments on the minutes? Okay, then we need a motion to approve.
I reviewed them. Motion?
Second.
Motion to approve and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. The first thing that we do is we have a section here for public comment. Anything, except what's on the agenda, because you'll have plenty of time on each agenda item to make comments on that. But if there's something that anybody here would like to say that's not on the agenda, they'd like to make a comment, now's the time. So just step up and, okay, I don't see anybody running to the podium, so we'll just close that part out. And we'll move on to the first item, which is a public hearing for a site plan review, special land use for Oakland Veterinary Services, 1400 Telegraph Road. So the first thing, Andrea, you're gonna present this.
Hi, good evening. Yes, absolutely, welcome. Hey, oops. I'm Andrea Bibby. I'm the Director of the Planning, Building, and Ordinance Department here at Bloomfield Township. The first item on the agenda this evening is a building addition for the existing Oakland County, it's Oakland Veterinarian Referral Services. This site plan actually encompasses two parcels. Highlighted on your screen on the left-hand side, you can see the aerial showing the building at 1400 Telegraph, which is the actual, the actual veterinarian clinic. And then to, I guess you would say, to the south would be the former 1410 building, which has since been demolished. So with this proposal before you, you can see that there is, on the site to the north on the aerial, you can see that there is a red line that runs through that property that actually indicates that the, the subject parcel is actually split, where the northern portion of the property actually falls within Pontiac. In this instance, the, in the improved, the addition and site improvements, since the majority of the building falls within, actually the entire building, and the proposed addition fall within Bloomfield Township, it's under our purview for review. Many of you are familiar, this is exactly at the point where old Telegraph and new Telegraph join in that, in that very distinct V that kind of separates the two, the two roads, thoroughfares that way. This gives you a high-level overview of the proposal. High, on the left-hand side of the screen, in the darker red shade, I just, this is the proposed building addition. The, Oakland Veterinarian Referral Services seeking approval to expand their existing 30,024-square-foot office building, adding a two-story addition and a 4,360-square-foot as well as a basement. The other site improvements, as I stated earlier, included the, the medical building that was located at 1400 has since been demolished. And the proposal with this applicant, the proposal that's included with this site plan request is to allow for that former site to be paved over and striped accordingly and landscaped as to provide additional parking for the Oakland, Oakland Veterinarian Referral Services. I do want to note that with this proposed addition, the applicant is seeking to add-on services that, that they want to expand upon. They're not looking to add-on, therefore, we don't look at this as an impact to parking or traffic, because this is just a continuation of some of their existing services. These improvements did not change the existing hours of operation, as the, the location service currently runs 24 hours a day, as they are known for their emergency services. So that is their, their hours of operation. The veterinarian clinic is considered a special land use in the B3 classification. And I do want to note that with the addition of the proposed parking, the site will now have, have a total of 150 parking spaces. So moving on to the site plan, you can note that the, the proposed addition is highlighted here in the bottom left-hand corner. Okay, I don't know why my screen is not matching your screen, so just give me just a moment here. Because it doesn't make, let's see. See how it's not showing that? Oh, maybe I have to go to resume size slideshow. Okay, that's what it was. Okay, there you go. Thank you. So highlight on your screen here, you can see the proposed addition. This also includes a addition of a pedestrian sidewalk, which is actually going to connect the existing veterinarian building. This is not the one that I want, I'm still having difficulty here. That was a landscape plan. You can see that their proposed addition is highlighted there to the left of your screen, and you can see highlighted in that darker shade of charcoal, if you will, that's indicating the, some new pathways, some pedestrian walkway that is being improved and included as part of the site plan. The only changes that are being made to the parking lot is there are a few ADA parking spaces that are being relocated, as to move them slightly closer to the main entrance of the building. The parcels, the site was recommended, okay, I'm sorry, skipping around here a little bit, sorry. In the, there was previously, back in 2015, a very similar proposal that was approved at the time for an addition to the veterinarian clinic. And this, so this is kind of in line with now their continued goal is to expand and continue their operations. The development site sits on approximately 3.1 acres, with approximately 2.24 acres of that falling within the city of Pontiac, as I stated earlier. They are, their, their increased site includes the addition of, of some office space, as well as examination rooms and different services and rooms that they can provide for, for the clinic itself. It does, it is compatible with surrounding land uses, as we're familiar with that portion of Northern Telegraph, which is primarily commercial operations. In terms of noise, there's no additional noise that's being proposed with this, that would be anything beyond what is currently being, that is currently occurring on the site. There's no light changes to the north parking lot. There are, there will be, as I had stated, they're, they are adding a pedestrian access that will run from, they are providing a pedestrian access that's going to run from the proposed building to the parking lot. And you can see that is highlighted along here, just immediately to the, I guess that would be the west, if you will, of the, I don't know why my cursor's not showing, the west of the detention basin. So there will be ability for workers that, that work at the clinic to be able to safely access the parking lot, to allow for them not to have to go near Telegraph Road to be able to accommodate that. There is an existing trash dumpster, dumpster on-site that is going to be maintained, and they are proposing to relocate an outdoor oxygen storage area to the, just immediately to the west of that detention basin. This is something that they currently are storing, I believe it's inside. They're currently storing it inside, which, safety protocol and a better location for this would be off, away from the building, in a safer location, kind of off by itself, so that's also part of this proposal. The proposed building addition does maintain the aesthetics of the, of the, of the, of the building as it is. The facade is maze, is composed of a face brick with color matching the existing structure. There will be some Ephes accents, as you can see highlighted in that lighter color on your screen. But in the, in the dark brown, you can see the various elevations of this proposed addition. So they do, the building elevations do reflect a building design that is architecturally compatible with the adjacent commercial buildings, as well as to the addition itself. So we do have requirements within our zoning ordinance as it relates to veterinarian hospitals and clinics. This does meet the requirements of that all the services are being conducted with inside the enclosed building. And the site does not butt up to any residential districts within the township. So again, you can see highlighted here the proposed location of that addition. I also want to note that the rooftop, on the upper left-hand photograph, I want to note that rooftop mechanicals will be screened accordingly with a screening material as to not be visible to the public, which is a requirement within our zoning ordinance. There are no proposed changes to the site circulation itself. Went out there today and took some site photographs. The upper right-hand corner, this would be, if you're standing on the sidewalk, you're looking to the north. And that basically demonstrates, if you will, you see the end of that northern end of the building, this demonstrates where that proposed addition will be located. And also in the bottom left-hand photograph, that will be looking more from the east, looking back and seeing where that proposed addition would be included. And I just grabbed some photographs of the existing building and entrance, as well as the parking lot. So with that, we did have an opportunity to have both the parking lot and the, and the site itself reviewed by a landscape architect. In this instance, it was reviewed by Giffel Webster, or I'm sorry, wrong site plan. My apologies. This was reviewed by our landscape architect, Dool, noting that the proposed landscaping within the parking lot area does comply with the provisions of our zoning ordinance, as they are adding the required landscaping bed. They are also adding a row of arborvitae that will run along the, the Telegraph Road there to the south. They will have a, a very tight hedge of about 50 or so arborvitae that will help kind of screen and soften the parking lot from public view. And again, as I stated, they are going to be softening it by adding those, the trees and landscape islands into the center of the parking lot. I do want to note that the parking spaces for the new addition, they will have some parking lot lighting that does meet the requirements within our ordinance, not exceeding 20 feet from base. We did have this reviewed by our various departments. You can see both the ESD and Fire Department and Police Department have all included within their memo, indicating they do not have any issues with the proposal. And then within the environmental, the engineering environmental services memo dated July 1st, 2025, noting that engineering plan review would be required if this so were to move on to the Planning Commission or Township Board for ultimate approval. With that, I did get an opportunity to go before the Design Review Board on July 16th, getting the favorable recommendation to forward it on to the Planning Commission. So this evening, we asked the Planning Commission to hold a public hearing and ask, under what considerations? A positive recommendation would be moved on to the, to the Township Board, as this application as submitted, is not seeking any variances as proposed. And with that, I do have representatives from the architect, as well as the, the owners and developer that would be here, that'd be happy to answer any questions related to the proposal and the use.
First, let's bring it back to the Commission for Questions. Andrea, anybody have anything? Any questions? I, I just have one. I want to clear one, just one thing. The new, according to the, what you showed, the new addition, the, the dividing line between Pontiac and Bloomfield Township runs right to the middle of the building, or part of it.
Yeah.
Not the middle, but a sign, a part of it.
I see.
Is that going to be a problem with Pont, does Pontiac have to then approve that part of it? Or how does that work?
In, so in the past, historically, what we've done and what we did back when there's other additions to the Oakland County Vet, because you could see the majority of the building is within the township, we, we do the review and permits for, for that portion. That's how it's been handled historically.
And Pontiac's okay with that? They're not going to have a problem, all of a sudden, say, well, you can't do that, because you haven't come to us?
I don't anticipate that that's going to be an issue.
Okay, good. All right, anybody? I have one question. Yeah, sure, go ahead.
I'm not sure if this would be for the architect, but is, does this building have standby emergency power?
Oh, I would, I would defer that to the applicant.
Yeah, let's see what they have to say first. All right. So then let, why don't you come on up? If you, if you have anything you want to add to that?
This one?
You can speak on that one. Oh, I just want to make a comment too, is we did ask the applicant to please reach out to Pontiac as a, as a courtesy and notification.
Good evening. My name's Cody Farber, Saks Construction. We're handling the construction of it.
And my name is Stefan Karadnik with SVA, Selective Architecture Architects. To kind of speak to the, to your first point, in regards to Pontiac, we did reach out to them, to give them the, the breakdown of the entire package that's been submitted to Bloomfield Township. We are in discussion with them to kind of move it along and get their take on of the project as a whole. So there are, there are discussions going on.
Their, their initial conversation, we went through all their protocols over the phone, and he didn't think there'd be any requirements, but he wanted to take a look at everything at hand anyways, and, and just check with his team as well.
Well, I only ask because I would hate to see you go through the whole process and all of a sudden get ready to go, and all of a sudden they say, wait a minute, hold on, you didn't, and, so I'm just want to be sure that you, you got your, all your docs in a row, that's all.
Yep.
That could be a consideration for a condition, possibly, that the board may want to consider as a condition of approval, is confirming satisfaction with the city of Pontiac.
Do you want to add to anything you want to?
So to answer your question about the emergency power, yes, there are two generators on-site currently.
Okay, because I'm not here to review the building, but I was wondering how you got away with only one stairway, so I guess if the elevator's on the emergency power, that's usually the exception. And again, not to review the building, because that's not our job, but if, if there had to be a second means of egress and it affected the planning, that's all, that's the only reason I asked the question. So is, is the reason that there's only one egress there because the elevator's also on the generator? Or is the whole building on the generator?
So, so the whole building is on the generator, so there are two additional staircases that are part of the original building. One's on the backside, there's that backside sidewalk that you can see there that runs down, where Andrea had the, showed the photograph, it runs down. Staircase dumps out back there, and they run back up where the new addition is. And then on the front side of the building, near the lobby area, there is another staircase there.
But this basement is kind of standalone, right? It's not, you don't have a basement on the first building, correct?
No, there isn't. No, correct. But yes.
Well, anyway, if it's on a generator, I believe, then you won't need the second means, and it won't affect the plan, so. The only question I had.
Okay. Anybody else? All right, then why don't we open up a public hearing to anybody who'd like to talk to this issue? Please come to the podium, your name, address, three minutes, everybody's going to have three minutes to say what they have to say. And, okay, I don't see anybody, so I'm going to close the public hearing. All right. Back to the, back to the Planning Commission. Any comments or questions or whatever? What's your pleasure? Make a motion that, positive recommendation to the Township Board for consideration, and subject to, that's being presented for Pontiac's review. Okay, so motion on the board, on the floor, is there, and support? Any comment, any discussion on the motion? All right, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that's it. Thank you very much. All right, next item is site plan for Birmingham Athletic Club. Okay. Same scenario.
The next proposal that we have is a site that is located at the south side of Maple Road, east of Telegraph. This is the Birmingham Athletic Club, located at 4003 West Maple Road. The site itself, as you can see highlighted on your screen, is surrounded by, there is a Comerica Bank immediately adjacent to the west of the site. There is the Country Club Manor Apartments located to the south of the site. And then to the actual site itself, to the right of the pool, the club does also have some additional parcels, which are actually zoned single-family residential. So the, some of the non-conformities, this gives you a better idea here of the, the zoning on this site. As you can see, it's highlighted in the orange, with, like I said, a little bit of the yellow to the right, which indicates single-family residential. So there are, this is an existing non-conforming use. So anytime there's any changes or additions to this site itself, because it is a private club located in the multiple-family residential district, just through the course of this development and over the course of the years, any changes does require a variance from the zoning Board of Appeals to expand an existing non-conforming. So I just wanted to kind of show you, you've, they've got some commercial, they've got R1, not immediately abutting, but immediately abutting to the south is the R, is the other RM. And then the R1 to the right. And then just to the east, on the other side of Oak Hills, the, actually abut the Oakland Hills Country Club. So just kind of giving you an idea of the, of the lay of the land, is it's a little, it's has two zoning classifications on it. So with this proposal, the applicant is seeking to do some site improvements, specifically closer to their clubhouse. They are asking to do an approximate 650-foot, 690-square-foot addition to their, the existing patio within their rear yard to allow for, you know, additional seating. So that's one proposal, would be to expand their patio space. They are also looking to rebuild the existing service station hut for food service. That hut is located within the West Maple Road frontage. They are looking to modify that and then to do some exterior renovations as that as well, to help to improve their food service operations. They do have a current tiki bar, which is highlighted in the smaller portion, which would be just to the east of the clubhouse itself. There's a small yellow rectangle that is to represent the rebuilding of the tiki bar. And then last, but certainly not least, is in the upper right-hand corner, if we call it that, immediately to Oak Hill, immediately at the corner of West Maple in Oak Hills, the applicant, after a lot of consideration, opted to not add new pickleball courts, but instead what they're doing is asking to re, or convert, if you will, an existing tennis court to allow for four pickleball courts. I do want to note that the proposal, as, as I stated earlier, because the athletic club and pool pavilion are existing non-conformities, they will be required to go to the zoning Board of Appeals for that, so I did already highlight that, I'm just bringing that, stating that again. The site is currently located on a portion of Maple Road that approximately has only 113-foot right-of-way, which is less than the minimum of 120-foot, which is required for this use. So that would be another variance, would be, that's another thing that renders this site non-compliant. The existing parking area, there's no proposed changes. There was a site plan that was approved back in 2018, and at that time, there was some changes to the parking lot and restriping. But with this proposal, there's no changes to ingress or egress or parking. I do want to note that the proposed hours and use of the pickleball court, pickleball courts, is they are not adding any additional lighting. The intention is that this would be used as their other courts are, which is until dusk. So there wouldn't be any additional lighting to illuminate the pickleball court for, for nighttime usage. So the, we're talking mainly about the addition of accessory structures. In this instance, the landscape plan was reviewed by our, by Giffels Webster, in conformance with the ordinance. In their report dated July 7th, 2025, they conclude that the proposed landscape improvements meet the intent of the zoning ordinance, and they recommend approval. In terms of the reviews by our various departments, this was reviewed by HRC, which is our consultant engineer. They reviewed the preliminary site plan with respect to the water main, sanitary sewer, stormwater, and grading. HRC's comments are included and attached in the review letter dated July 14th, 2025. They have recommended that the site plan is recommended for approval, and that the, the applicant, and that the applicant provide an easement for the existing 18-inch and 21-inch combined sewer that traverses through the tennis court. So that was kind of an interesting find. When they were looking to kind of reconfigure and find out where they wanted to locate their tennis courts, they, they were notified by the township that they in fact have a, a rather good-sized water main that runs through the, that, sorry, it's a sewer that traverses through the tennis court area. So they will have to provide an easement to the township for that. I do want to note that the Fire Department has no issues with the proposal as presented. I do, would like to show some elevations of the proposed changes. So you can see, oh, I don't know why my, this is not. Sorry about that. So these are some elevations showing the proposed tiki hut. The tiki hut is proposed rather close to the, as I stated, the east side of the existing clubhouse. You can see the staircase that's coming down from the patio, onto the, onto where the tiki bar would be located. As many of you are familiar, this site is actually set down a bit from Maple Road, so the chances that these structures will be visible, or any more visible than anything that's currently there, is very unlikely. However, they will have to go to the zoning Board of Appeals for the fact that their accessory structures, they're being changed. And lastly, because they're located within frontages, because technically, this lot really does have two front yards, the Maple and Oak Hills Drive. On the right-hand side, you can see the elevation in the proposed food service hut, that they're looking to maintain and continue the same architectural features and designs that are on the main clubhouse, with a cedar siding. And again, this is in the same location that this hut currently sits in, they're just looking to do some renovations with it and do, do some site improvements. So again, this is also something that exists currently and has very little visibility to the, to Maple Road. So this was a nice rendering, if you will, of the proposed area that we're talking about. Up and behind the proposed tiki hut is that expanded patio that I had mentioned. And then this would be a view more from the Maple Road side, showing the proposed renderings. So I just want to note that in terms of the pickleball court itself, the applicant is going to be requesting an eight-foot-high fencing, and that will include a sound barrier netting, not netting, but it's, it's a sound barrier material, to help with any noise and help soften the, the noise that's coming from the pickleball court. I do want to note that the applicant did, was required by the township and did submit a sound study. We did have that sound study presented and reviewed by HRC, and they do note that with the, they feel that the proposal is acceptable as it relates to the, the sound, as with the ambient sound of both Maple Road and the proposed location. And then they also did take under consideration the sound barrier, that they do, they're, they're not, the noise coming from the pickleball will be no louder than any, the ambient noise coming from the, from Maple Road. And in their estimation, they determined that they do not feel that there's going to be a negative impact in terms of the sound and decibels that would impact the neighbors in the immediate vicinity. And as, as I stated earlier, the applicant did select this location, which is, would be, in my opinion, probably more preferred than being further south, closer to residential. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. I do know that we have members of the Soroki Architectural Team that put together these renderings and the site plan, as well as represent, Representative Rick Ratner, which has also been ushering through this project as well, and is very familiar with it. We just want to note that any consideration by the Planning Commission this evening, you would want to consider the compliance with the notations of the Township Department, compliance with the requirements of the Township's landscape architect, as well as seeking those necessary variances and permission requests from the zoning Board of Appeals. And with that, I can, I'm happy to answer any questions. And with that, I can happily answer any questions as relates to the proposal.
Just trying to clarify the variances. So there's one for the doing the work within the right-of-way that's less than the 120.
That's for a private club in this use. So I guess the two of them are tried, kind of tied together, the expanding the existing non-conforming. They're non-conforming with the zoning and they're also non-conforming with the right-of-way. So I basically would kind of couple those as one variance for expanding the existing non-conforming. Correct.
And is there one required for the front yard? Or it's all, it's all one variance, basically?
Well, the front yard for the, what we would consider the,
Second front yard.
The tiki hut, the food pantry or the food hut being changed, as well as the fencing proposed for the sports court, that's also a frontage. So those are all the frontage, the sports court, the fencing, the tiki and the food are all variances for being frontages. And the terrace, thank you. And then the last portion that's going to need a variance itself will be for the netting or the fencing that surrounds the sports court being taller than four feet. Our ordinance, we treat the sports netting and fencing similar to a fence. Our ordinance states that fences can only be four feet high. In this instance, they're actually asking to go higher than that. So that would be another variance.
Okay, so it sounds like three variances then.
I think that you could probably group it that way because like I said, most of them have to do with the location and the site itself.
I wasn't able to read the entire sound study, but do they take into consideration that there's already sound coming from the tennis courts?
That's actually a very good question. Do you want, would you like to speak, who wants to speak to the sound study? I know they took on the ambient noise for the road, but for the tennis, I'm not 100% sure if they did that.
Good evening, Alex Soroki, Soroki Architecture. Our acoustic engineer did several different studies in various conditions, but he did model two specific locations on the site and its ambient noise. So if throughout the day tennis was happening, obviously it took account of the traffic. And so that's how those two numbers were derived.
Andrea, I'd like to answer a question. You might also have an answer, but let me, Andrea, the distance, were you able to find, get the distance from that pickleball court to the residence at?
No, but I bet Alex knows that.
6580 Oak Hills Drive.
I can tell you if I look at the, I can get pretty close. I don't know the exact number, but if I look at the survey, I can look at that property line. So the property line is 281 feet. So.
So what he's indicating is that the property line that runs along Oak Hills, the whole length of that is 280 feet. So if that's 280 feet for that property line, with the presumption that that home is constructed, say 16 feet from that lot line, we're looking at about 300 feet.
Okay, so following up on his question, right now, there's noise from the tennis court. I'm getting a little confused about the direction, but the lowest tennis court, the lower right tennis court, the ones closest to the home.
Sure.
There's noise there now. Okay.
Correct.
The noise that would come from the pickleball court, is that any greater than the noise that now comes from the lower, closest tennis court?
No, I don't think so. I mean, the biggest takeaway I had from the acoustic study was there were ambient noise readings of like 55 closer to Maple and 53 closer to the property line. And with the acoustablock material, it was at, I think it was at 45. So it was even quieter than the ambient noise that's there today.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, thanks. Anybody else?
Not yet.
What?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay. All right, then you're up then, from Birmingham Athletic Hall, if you want to present anything in addition or whatever you want.
My name is Rick Ratner, excuse my voice. 380 north Old Woodward. I'm excited to be here because this is the product of two years of design work. It originally was much more intense. And we had more courts and we had a different setup. But this has been curated mainly to make sure there is no effect on our neighbors, deleterious effect. And what you see now is minimal. Moving the court, the pickleball court nearer to Maple Road is a huge move because Maple is dangerous. I know I used to live on it and it's dangerous for noise. But the rest of it is really taking what the club has and maintaining it and spoofing it up so that if you had a situation where the terrace where they eat is all on the ground, it's not a, it's tile on the ground. And we just expand that outwards a bit. The tiki bar is there now. Now it will be a nicer-looking tiki bar, as you can see from the rendering. The operations of the club don't change. It's the same operations as have been in effect probably since about 1955. Because this club was founded about 1955 roughly. So what we have here is a minimum disturbance and something that allows us to maintain and repair those things that should be repaired. There is no increase in membership, there's no change in operations. To help us, if you have more questions about that, I have the manager of the club, Derek Jock. I have the manager's rep, Steve Guidos, and a representative of the construction team, Nick Devlin, to answer any questions that you might have. So thank you for your time and I hope we meet your approval so we can move to the zoning board and I can say why we need these, these variances, which have almost existed over a period of time. So thank you.
All right, let's come back again into the commission. Neil, did you have a question?
Not until after the public comment.
Any comment or any questions? Okay, then let's open it up for the public comment on this issue. Please come up, name and address, three minutes per person. Come up to the microphone and go right ahead.
Three minutes?
Three minutes.
I can do it.
Good.
Thank you for your service, board. And my name is John Schultz, I live at 4049 West Maple. I'm in the Country Club Manor Condominium Association. We have 40, 49, 47, 45, 43 and 41. Now that is, the building in our complex is probably going to be most affected by the expansion of BAC. Can somebody clarify if this pickleball court is going to be built on existing tennis court or if you're building it over? Is it being? Go ahead.
We can, you know, we can take notes and then we can certainly make sure all the questions get answered by the applicant. So that's a good question, we'll take it. And then we can ask the question to the applicant. So you want to know exactly where the location is.
I was concerned, we have a wooded lot that's at the southeast corner of complex and it's property that we own and we sort of have a lease agreement with the club for our driveway off of Maple. So I'm kind of interested in where this project was going. So if it's being built over an existing tennis court?
It is.
It is?
Yeah, so you've seen that.
Okay, I couldn't understand from this.
Okay, yeah, so it's going over an existing tennis court. Sorry, I didn't understand, I thought you were acting more about the construction.
The noise from, I don't know if anybody's familiar with pickleball, I only know the noise it makes. And it's like a lot of ticking and tacking, but it's offensive. And I think you mentioned that they're putting up a sound barrier to minimize the noise. So I'm grateful for that. Do you know where if they're going to be needing additional parking? They're already, the club is already overburdened for parking. And they frequently use the lot that we have in front of my building. And anyway, we've got a little pushing and shoving. But they're doing a lot better keeping their cars out of there. But I thought if they're going to be expanded, if it's going to require additional parking, if they're going to need it, and where's, where that parking is going to go. You mentioned that they're going to not have lighting or it's going to be restricted with the number of hours that they use? Is that right?
Yes, well, until dusk. Until dusk.
Till it's dark out.
When it's dark, it can't be used, no light.
Okay, and I should mention that I'm not, I'm just a concerned citizen. I'm not a legal representative, my condo associated. So I just, pretty much once in a while I'm here, I'm just voicing some questions and thoughts. All right, you know, I don't, I don't think I have anything else.
Okay.
That's, that's good news.
I'm sorry, go ahead. Thank you. Go ahead.
Oh, that's, that's all I have to.
Okay, thank you, but we want to answer the question about the parking. Andrea, meet, yeah, answer that. That was the only other question they had.
So they are not adding any additional parking with this site plan?
Yeah, well, there probably isn't any space for it.
Correct, and so they do have, my understanding is they have an agreement with the Comerica that they use their overflow parking.
Fortunately.
Yeah, but all I, what I can respond to right now is that there's no parking that's being added at this time.
All right, okay. The other thing I had questioned, if I wasn't sure where this pickleball court was going, if they needed additional access to the, if you're going to have to come off Country Club drop?
No.
All right, good. That's all good news.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Well, thank you. Thank you for the three minutes. I hope I didn't run over it.
No, you got it right in. Sir.
Good evening. My name is Sergio Bassmagen. I own the residence that's right there at 6580 Oak Hills Drive. Couple of things I want to clarify. It's not 280 feet from the pickleball court to my house, it's 280 feet from the street to my house. Tennis courts are only 75 feet. There's only one tennis court between the pickleball court and mine. That's only about 120 feet to my house. That's one thing. Plus, no one will say that a pickleball makes anywhere close to a tennis ball noise. It's, everyone has, they've done studies on that. It's about four or five times the noise of a tennis ball. There is no way to say that it's going to be the same noise. Granted, they've done a lot of stuff to, they were originally going to put 12 courts right behind my house, but that's good that they toned it down. So BAC originally was approved for a tennis and swim club. Since then, they've grown four times in size. They're already non-conforming in a residential zone. They've never followed any restrictions that they tell you on. They have parties at that pool up till midnight almost every Thursday, Friday, Saturday. I've called the police probably 100 times since I've lived there. They're constantly, they used to put their speakers towards Maple. People from on the other side of Maple complained. They turned it to our house before we moved in. And my, my house windows used to shake from that. I used to call and they never did anything about it. They would have massive parties. The paddleball, they play paddleball till 11 o'clock. So they have lights on there and they don't even turn off the lights at night. So my house is actually lit up all night where I got, I had to put in special blinds for that. I've called them over and over. They've never done anything about that. Again, the main point that you want to point out with this is that this is not a hardship, as you know, the ordinance has to look at as far as a variance. They're already non-conforming. This is not a large country club with a lot of land that's requesting to put in a pickleball court that normally has 1,500 to 2,000 feet to the residence. That pickleball court is 150 feet from my house. If they want to do all these things, they should just buy a bigger property. I mean, yes, it's, you know, at the end of the day, if I went there too, I'd love to have a pickleball court. I love playing that stuff. But at the end of the day, none of these people that are saying that they want this, none of these members that are at this club will allow a pickleball court right next to their house. So the main point I want to make again is that for ordinance, in order for a zoning appeal or something to be approved is where they have to show a hardship. There's no hardship here, it's just a luxury. Listen, I'd like to put a tennis ball, I'd like to put a tennis court in my front. But if I don't, if I don't have the space, guess what, I can't do it. They're non-conforming. This is not a hardship, it's a luxury. And at the end of the day, again, they've been a horrible neighbor to be next to. They never do anything that they say. So that's, I just want to point that out.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, the one issue that he brought up, confirm. I asked about the distance from the pickleball court to the person's house.
Yeah, we just scaled it, we just measured it. So from the bottom of the proposed pickleball court to his house is about 180 feet. So that's from the southernmost point of the pickleball court.
To the house.
To the house. That's why Corey ran downstairs to scale it so we could have an accurate dimension.
What about the lighting, the parties, other things? Do you want to mention that now or is that something?
I think that would be something that would be appropriate to have management come up to speak to.
Okay, okay. The only other thing is that you talked about the variances, about the hardship and that, that's not our job.
That's not wrong form for that.
Right, that's the zoning board of appeals. So you may be right about that, but that's up to them, not us. So that's out of our thing. Okay, anybody else would like to speak to this?
My name's Bob Overman and I'm at 4029 Country Club Drive, which would be south of the, south tennis courts. The first house south, it's not on this map. And one curious item, the, the courts to the left and up is, are those pickleball courts also?
No, no.
But there's, pickleball has been played there.
Paddleball?
No, it's pickleball. I've seen pickleballs down there, they're all over the place. And I agree with the previous guy. There's definitely a lot louder noise from pickleballs than tennis balls. I mean, you, if you stand next to a pickleball court, stand next to a tennis ball court, you'll definitely hear a difference. So, but I thought you were going to move the pickleball courts down further south on the other tennis courts. I don't know if that was a plan at one time or not.
It's up to the upper right-hand corner. That's pickleball.
Gotcha, that's all it is.
Okay, thanks. Anyone else?
Evening, my name is Derek Jocks. I'm the general manager at the club. Happy to address any questions, particularly the question or the point made about the lighting. That's coming from, there's four courts that exist right now that are not part of this project. There's lighting there, that lighting is typically used in the winter time. That's typically used, of course, when it gets dark out at 4:35 o'clock, those lights will go on. They're on mechanical timers. They're operated by the users as they come to that space. So they'll turn those on, they're limited to one hour on those timers. Yes, that's for paddleball. The last time that I'm aware of that that was an issue, we were notified, we made corrections. It was during the time change and then we had a power outage. These are mechanical timers. So when you have a power outage, it freezes that time. When we got the notice, we realized that there was a systematic error. We made the correction. We've just been keeping a stronger eye on that now with longer daylight. We haven't had any opportunities to use that light. We're not using that space that late in the evening. So when it gets back to fall and winter, we'll certainly be paying more attention to that, possibly upgrade that system where it's not mechanical in something more electronic based to prevent that from happening.
And I want to, I want to answer the question that was raised about, he said that pickleball is played on those paddleball courts. Could you, could you talk to that? Is that true? Is it not true? If it is, can you not do that?
Yes, so that's one of the intentions of moving these courts so that it is a way. And so in the summertime, we're not playing pickleball that late at night. I can't remember the last time if it's even happened where we've even used the lights for tennis and even for the pickle courts where the paddle is right now. It's, there's so much light, you know, going through the day, we don't play that late at night. So lighting right now, as far as I know, is not an issue. We're playing during daylight hours.
I was asking, but those are paddleball courts. Is pickleball played there?
Pickball is played there now, yes.
See, okay, that's, okay, that's, that is what the gentleman said. And I, if those are paddleball courts, pickleball is way noisier. We know, everybody knows that. And if it's being played on those courts right next to those homes, that's problematic.
Right.
Now, the other one is all the way up in the other corner, 100 and whatever, 180 feet, whatever it is. And that noise is somewhat mitigated by the time it reaches down there. I get that, but these are right next to those homes.
Right.
And that is very noisy. And they're not approved, they are paddleball courts, not pickleball. They were never approved. And that is very noisy, and they're not approved, they are paddleball courts, not pickleball, they were never approved as pickleball by anybody here, or anybody in the township. Just, so, the que, the, the complaint is that they're being used like that, is there, can that not, can we specify that that's not done, if that is a pickleball court up in the corner?
Yes, we, we're planning on moving that play to the new courts, so that wouldn't exist there, the use wouldn't.
Go ahead.
That's not the answer.
That's not the, that's not what we're looking for, actually what we're looking for, um, before I make a request of you with that paddleball court and the use of pickleball there, um, first of all, let me, let me start from the beginning. I, I think that the current, um, proposal for the pickleball court in the, um, in the north, northeast corner of Maple and Oak Hills is thoughtful. And where it's currently being played is not thoughtful, and I think it's inconsiderate of the neighbors. Um, also, I think it's very thoughtful having the, the mitigation of, um, the noise with the sound barrier and the sound fence, I think that will be very helpful. Um, there are certainly a lot of ambient noise from Maple, uh, from the club, and for that matter, tennis from the tennis courts that you have, and from the tennis courts that Oakland Hills has, and for your pool, and for Oakland Hills pool. So, I certainly am very confident in HRC's analysis of the ambient noise. So, I, I have no problem with the proposal, I do have a problem with you having pickleball in an unapproved area. And so, I think part of my, if I do make a proposal, part of it will be that you cease and desist immediately as far as pickleball in a, in a non, uh, in an area that has not been approved by the township. So, uh, if you want to get a positive, you want to get a positive, um,
Result.
Result and recommendation, for me, that's gonna stop immediately. So, I hear a yes. I'm not gonna approve this unless you agree to stop the pickleball in a, an area that has not been approved by the township. The paddleball was never approved, having pickleball there, so are you, are you making a commitment that that will stop immediately?
We can do that, in order to keep this project moving forward, if that's a requirement, then that's what we'll have to do.
That's what I want to hear. So, as of immediate, as of, this will be the, if people are out there now, you're not gonna throw them off, but this is the last night, there's gonna be pickleball there, uh, in that location. Again, I, I think the rest of the proposal is, is very thoughtful, and you need to keep your neighbors, and you need to be considerate of the neighbors. And, uh, the first, certainly the first home over there, he's in a, he's in a tough situation, he moved in there knowing that, uh, he has you as a neighbor, uh, in the club, but still, there needs to be some consideration. And I think by putting this project together the way you have, it shows some consideration. Anyone else?
Yeah, I have one other.
Sure.
Maybe Andrea, you could help me with this.
Yeah, sure.
Um, the gentleman said there are parties, the pools that last till midnight or later, I don't know, is there a time limit for, for those kinds of, in an ord, in our ordinances?
Well, we have a noise ordinance, um, and in terms of your hours of operation, I would presume that midnight would go beyond an acceptable time to be having loud parties, so that would be an issue. Um, I, maybe you could speak to the frequency of these parties and what they're doing at their end to help mitigate the neighbors' concerns, because I have had conversations with Sergio, I knew that he had some concerns about this, so we've all kind of been in communication. So, I really want to kind of, um, have that be an operational thing that really should be being managed by the club.
Yep. Because there is an ordinance, I know, businesses, um, can only operate, I'm gonna, I'm, I'm gonna say till eleven PM, is that correct? After that, they need to get a special land use permit?
Well, technically, it's, in our ordinance, under, in a, in a business district.
This is a business.
Well, unfortunately, the zoning ordinance doesn't speak to, but their hours of operation are until nine. Um, it's not uncommon that we do have some of these social activities that occur maybe into dusk or into the evening, but I would think eleven o'clock to midnight is awfully late. Um, but again, I, I would defer to their operations in, um, how they're mitigating these concerns.
Those issues addressed.
Understood.
They're here saying what they, and if that's the case.
Mm-hmm.
Well, address it either administratively with them, I don't know how that's done, but it's still, it should be addressed, so, because they have the concern.
Understood.
Okay. Go ahead.
Do you want to speak to the?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, absolutely. I can tell you, um, I began at the club last November, and to this day, we have not had any outside entertainment booked, uh, that would be noise-making after ten PM. Uh, our own speaker systems and things that we do.
Starting at ten, or ending at ten?
Ending at ten PM.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Yep, sorry. Uh, anything that we have on our own that we do ourselves, we try to stick with that same ten PM. We don't do things at midnight, we don't, the, it's usually empty, eleven, eleven-thirty at the latest. Um, we, we just don't have those events there. I've not seen anything like that, not heard of anything like that in the recent past couple of years.
And I guess I can just respond to in terms of being from the ordinance division, I have not, I am not familiar, I am familiar with the recent complaint about lighting, in which BAC did go out and address, as he stated, about the, the lighting, we did, we did address that. But in terms of complaints of hours of operation, of course, that's something that ordinance would absolutely follow up on if that was a complaint that we were giving. Um, I have not personally heard of any noise complaints, maybe speaking to, to his point, um, in, in recently.
Okay.
But of course, that would be a concern.
You're the one that brought that up, I think, no, I, the discussion's over, but what I want to have happen is if you hear that happen again, please call the ordinance department and talk to them. Okay, all right. We want to solve, I'm, I'm bringing it up because I want it solved.
Okay.
Hi. You have a question?
Two items that I just want to clarify, so I heard Mr. Homeowner say that, uh, if anybody says that pickleball is not as loud as tennis, that, I just want to make sure what I heard. So, what I heard was, I'm not a sound expert, I've used them before, they seem to be, you know, it's a science and I'm not a scientist, but I heard that there's ambient noise right now.
Correct.
Of X, I think it was fifty-two or whatever the number is, and with the new pickleball court, with the sound wall, not on its own, the, the prediction is it's gonna be less than that, whether it's forty-five or forty-six. I just want to make sure I heard what I heard, that there's ambient noise today, and the noise created from the pickleball after the wall was, uh, the, it's not a wall, it's a fence, but it has acoustical material, it's gonna be that or less. I just want to make sure I heard it correctly, so we're not saying.
So, it's a.
Mr. Shiroki, can you show us, you know, the exact location?
It's on the south side of the pickleball courts, right, because we're trying to protect the sound from, uh, the, the residences to the south. So, um, it, it's a, uh, it's called a, uh, acoustic fence or acoustic block, and it's an eighth-inch thick vinyl that gets applied to, uh, the, the fencing, and it reduces the decibel level. The, the, the literature of it says it reduces the, the decibel level by twenty-eight decibels, so it's pretty substantial, but, you know, our acoustic engineer takes a lot of things into account and modeled it, and it is, in fact, with that installed, it is less than what it is today, uh, the ambient noise.
Do you have, do you have a laser pen?
Unfortunately, laser pens don't work on the new TVs, I just found out.
Okay, can you just go up to them and put your, burn your finger across where you're talking about that, so everybody can understand?
We'll be ordering new ones that work on the TV screen.
What?
We were using it ZBA and it wasn't showing up, because it's a TV screen.
So, across the southern end of the pickleball.
Okay.
Is where that acoustic.
Thank you.
Is supposed to be installed.
Thanks.
Would it return a few feet either way to help support it?
It does, it returns a few feet on, on each end exactly.
And it's eight foot high?
It's eight foot high.
Requires a variance, because normally it would only be allowed to be four foot high, so I, I heard it correctly, but the other thing that I heard, since you're up there, that's good, is I thought I heard that the existing tennis courts are not illuminated, but we're talking about illumination, so I, I just want to clarify what I heard, did I hear it wrong, or is there part of it that's not illuminated and part of it that is, I just want to make sure it's on the table.
Of course, so, there is no change to existing lighting. Currently, the three northern tennis courts do have lights, but as the general manager mentioned, they're, they're rarely turned on, the tennis really isn't played in the evening in the summer. There is also existing lighting at the four paddle or platform tennis, tennis courts, uh, to the south. Uh, so that's all existing, and there's no change to existing.
Um. Is there happen, this wasn't brought up, but again, since we're talking about it, is there a time of certain months where there's no paddleball, pickleball, tennis, is it, if I, November to whatever the months are? Or are there some people that still go out and play like the crazy golfers that want to golf in the winter?
No, I think in the, uh, if, correct me if I'm wrong, I think in the middle of the winter, the nets aren't even up, but, um, tennis starts, I, I'm assuming late spring and goes, uh, into early fall, it's the same for pickleball. Platform tennis or paddle is the opposite, it's played in the winter months.
Okay. And then just repeating the same thing, the, the lighting that is existing is on a timer, and maybe once or twice it was overlooked, but you're gonna, since you're new there, and you're gonna make sure that that doesn't happen. Because they're only, when, if somebody uses it and they set it for an hour and, and, and the lights go off and they want to keep playing, are they, do they have the ability to reset it for another fifty?
Yes, yep, and then there's a cutoff to that that should keep it, if I went over there and turned it to an hour, say at ten forty-five PM, it should shut off at eleven o'clock regardless of what the timer says. There's a second timer that cuts off at eleven o'clock.
Oh, regardless of what the, uh, player does with the timer.
Correct.
So, there has a, has a maximum override. Okay.
And on that, on, in the, on the, the new pickleball court, is there any, that was, is a tennis court now, was there any lighting there now?
There is.
Okay, so, on the pickleball court, you're gonna remove the lighting, is that correct?
The lighting was in this plan, it's stayed as is with no change.
So, there will be lighting on the pickleball court?
Correct.
We're not proposing any changes to existing lighting, so today, the three northern tennis courts are lit, and we're not changing that.
I was under the impression they said that there was no lighting on the new pickleball court.
No new lighting.
Okay, I understood no lighting, period.
Okay.
I guess I got that wrong, because that means you can play until, well, till eleven o'clock at night, you can be playing pickleball. Right? That's.
One, one good, I can tell you from how the members use the club right now, if the use doesn't change, I, I'd say that's extremely unlikely that somebody.
Well, pickleball's a new use though. You, you get, pickleball's different, it's a very, a growing sport, a lot of people want to play it, it's moving leaps and bounds, so I don't, I wouldn't go by what they're doing now, tennis, I'd go by what people do with pickleball, because that's becoming a boom sport. So, what you're saying is that they can be playing till eleven o'clock at night, because you say at that time, the electricity's shut off, whether they want it or not, so it's eleven o'clock at night, they can be playing pickleball.
Up until then.
I'm hearing two different things.
Yeah, yeah, I was informed prior to the meeting that they would be playing until dusk.
Yeah, and that's, that's.
So, it sounds like it's.
We can adjust the lighting on that, yeah. Yeah, that can be adjusted.
Okay, I, I would not want lighting on a pickleball court, so that, because, because again, it is noisier, we all know that, and I know you got mitigation, I got all that.
Right.
But still and all, to be allowing pickleball to be played till eleven o'clock at night, that's late. I, in my opinion, okay, so, and if, if it was presented that at dusk, that's what I heard. I would say that in part of anybody make, in a motion, it would have to be that included.
That's what was presented.
I know. I get, that's what I'm asking.
Understood, understood.
Okay, very good, thank you.
We, we can adjust the time.
Thank you.
I have a question. This, uh, because this fencing that you are supplying, is that a year-round, is that impervious to the winter destroying it?
No, it can stay up all year. Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Hi. Oh, sir, shoot, go ahead.
I would like to ask. Uh, Mr. Burnett said to cut it off, pickleball, right now. I think, I don't play pickleball. Thank goodness, but I've been in a lot of meetings about pickleball. Um, don't they put a different, uh, set of lines on the?
There's a different set of lines.
On the paddle court. Which everybody's done.
Right.
It's not a very good pickleball court, it's not made, what I would ask is, if the club puts up an acoustic fence around the paddle, can we play at least till the end of the season, this season?
That's, I, I would, well, depends on who makes the motion, okay, the motion's gonna, whatever it is, um, I would say, at this point, it's not being used as an approved use now. It was never approved to be pickleball, it was only approved as paddleball, and I, in my opinion, I would say, you use, you opt in out, it was a gift that you got it up till now, and I think that's the end of it, that's my opinion, but, it depends on who makes the motion and what it is.
I understand what you're saying, um, my, my sense, and I could be, I could be wrong, but I have a sense of, knowing my colleagues, and from what I'm hearing, that it's not gonna be a positive recommendation from this body, if, I'm seeing a lot of shaking heads, yes. Uh, we're not gonna have a positive recommendation of this body if we are to use that approach, and I would like to see this moving along, invested a lot of time and effort for over two years, in trying to get this thing moving forward, I think it's a good plan. Um, minus, well, I don't consider the current pickleball use part of the plan, that's part of the problem.
Right.
But, um, I think it's a very good plan, thoughtful plan, something that is beneficial, uh, to the club, to the township, uh, I think it's taking the first homeowner into consideration, um, I mean, it, so.
No, no.
No.
I'm listening.
Okay, go ahead.
So, uh, before I make a motion, I want to, if Andrea has.
No, I, I think I'm just going to say, I used to be a member at the BAC, I know that they've worked very hard in reeling back this plan, um, I would be open to having them install the acoustic fencing around the current paddle courts to appease the in-between process. Um, if the board doesn't support that, I'm not going to, you know, obviously, that's not gonna fly, but, um, continue with your, what I'm anticipating is going to be a motion.
Okay, so then I will, I'm, I'm glad you said that, that's helpful.
Is it?
It may be.
I think so, I would, I would support that, if that's how you feel.
Okay.
But, I mean, it's, I don't know how you would navigate that, I certainly don't want it to be negative.
Okay.
Yes.
With that said, okay, I'd like to make a motion, um, that we give a, a positive recommendation to the township board, subject to, of course, any, um, presentation to the ZBA and approval for any variances, and of course, in compliance with the, uh, department, uh, department's recommendations, uh, and their, uh, and the compliance with the landscape architects' plans. That the, uh, use of the pickleball at all times must stop at dusk and cannot be used with lighting. If there're contin, if there are, of course, if there are any problems with sound, that, uh, the club will certainly take into consideration if they need to make any adjustments with the fencing or the sound barrier. And also, that, uh, pickleball, since it has not been presented to the township for consideration previous to this, which it really should have been, uh, that it really, it, and in consideration for some of the surrounding neighbors, uh, that it really needs to stop until this, until this is brought forward and hopefully approved by the township board.
All right, there's a motion on the floor, is there a second?
There's a.
Move in a second?
Uh, support.
Support, all right, okay, doesn't matter. Uh, moving forward, any discussion on the motion? Did you want to talk about?
Did we hear a commitment that they're gonna stop playing the pickleball now then?
Well, that's what he said.
They said they would.
He said he would. All right, well, I don't see any more discussions, so all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, that's how it works, very good, thank you, thank you very much, thanks very much.
Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda is a new car wash at, um, well, need glasses to see the address. Nineteen thirty-three Telegraph Road. Okay.
Well, moving right along. Okay, the next proposed one we have this evening is for a proposed car wash, uh, to be located, it's, uh, the name is El Car Wash. Uh, the proposed location is to be where the current Calico Corners is located, um, at nineteen thirty-three South Telegraph Road, um. I thought I had an aerial in here. Well, the property is zoned B3. As you're familiar with the site, it is located just immediately south of Menards. And it is, would be located along Telegraph Road in front of the villages at Bloomfield Development that we're familiar with. So the applicant is seeking the approval for a fully enclosed 4,100, 658 auto laundry with a 10,356 square foot enclosed vacuum structure at 1933 South Telegraph. Highlighted on your screen, you can see the proposal as, as shown. The vacuum, so the southern, so the building that you would see just on the, the south portion of the site plan would be the, I believe it's the Credit Union Building? Okay, I just wasn't even sure if it was Xfinity or Credit Union, I apologize. So the, the Michigan Government and Schools Credit Union is actually the building that would be closest to this proposal to the south. So site access to the site would be, or access to the site would be provided via an interior ring road, an existing ring road at the north of the site that services the surrounding businesses of the Bloomfield, Bloomfield, villages at Bloomfield. The top drive aisle lanes, which would be accessed from the ring road, there's an opportunity to enter into the queue line, which would be closest to the vacuum building. You can see there are cars that are slightly shaded in what we call that queue lane. An applicant, or a, a patron would enter via the ring road, they would get in line in queue for the pay station, which is actually located along the Telegraph Road frontage. So from exiting the site to the rear, the queue line would then run from east to west towards Telegraph. And then at that point, the, the patron could then go through the, the covered pay stations, which are located, again, immediately adjacent to Telegraph to the front. And then they would then travel more south to the site, enter in through the car wash, and then exit through the same ring road to the back. Another option is if somebody were to come into the site or to come through the car wash and they solely wanted to access the interior vacuum, covered vacuum area, there is also an ability for them to access the vacuum area to the rear of the site as well. As well as if somebody's exiting the car wash, which is the covered auto laundry portion to the south, they would also have the ability, if they so choose, to enter into the vacuum. The vacuumed area would, is designed in a way that cars can pull out and turn around inside, so that they would be able to safely enter and exit the enclosed vacuum area out of the same ingress and egress into that, that vacuumed area. So it's a little bit in terms of the configuration. I do want to note that in the township, we do require in our fire marshal, also requires in what we call an opt-out lane or a bypass lane. So the app, we worked very closely with the applicant and they were able to work with us as long, as well as with MDOT, to get a preliminary approval from MDOT for them to have that new proposed curb cut, which is more northern to the site. There's currently a access drive to the south of Calico Corners. That would be closed and then a newer curb cut, as shown on your screen, would be accessed further north of the site. And that would allow for cars that are in the queue or a fire truck to be able to safely exit out of the site onto Telegraph Road. So the, the site circulation, the ingress and egress was carefully reviewed by both our department as well as the fire marshal. So I just wanted to kind of show you the proposed layout of the, of the drive-through. The proposed hours of operation are within the confirmed times, it's not a special angeus. They're seeking to operate from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, Monday through Sunday. I do want to note that the subject parcel does have cross-access to the east of the site, as I noted, with the village at Bloomfield Development. The 2007 master plan for future land uses, that was reaffirmed in 2022, recommends commercial uses along this corridor and this property is in fact zoned B3. I've reviewed the site circulation. I do want to show here, highlighted on your screen too, as I'm talking about, maybe a little cleaner drawing, if you will, and you can see the pavement markings to the rear of the site, as I spoke of earlier, where there's an opportunity to enter both the queue lane as well as the more northerly bypass lane. And then you can also see the pavement markings that would go in and out of the proposed covered vacuum area. So just to clarify, you, the top portion is the vacuum, the bottom gray portion that abuts that side lot line, that's actually the enclosed car wash. So I just want to highlight here that the fire marshal was able to run their turn radii truck to determine that they will be able to safely maneuver around the site as proposed. They have provided some 3D renderings, showing you the, an overview of what the proposal would look like. Within the B3 zoning classification, we do allow for buildings to go right up to the side lot line, to have a zero lot line if there's no windows. The applicant is providing an elevation that's not windows, but it's more of a glazing to kind of give the appearance of windows. But because they are not actually having windows, they are meeting the setback requirement and they are permitted to go up to that southerly lot line. I also do want to note that they are providing a covered, rather enclosed pay area. So as opposed to the standard maybe drive up and you see the arm that lifts up and down in the pay stations. And I also believe that due to the proximity of the queuing in the pay stations to Telegraph Road, I think this is a, a more desirable, kind of attractive appearance that makes it looks and appears as it's actually part of the building itself. So to the, if we're looking at the, these two diagrams, again, to the, and the picture on the left-hand side, you would see that point of the ingress and egress into the fire, I'm sorry, into the vacuum, as well as the car wash on that would be on the left-hand picture, would be on the right-hand side. And then you can see to the bottom of that picture, further to the left, you can see that proposed new egress point onto Telegraph Road. So the design elevations, oh, I, so I do want to note that the proposed parking, the, the requirement would be that with, for a car wash, the proposed site does have the vacuum enclosures. They have a total of 14 spaces in there, including one barrier-free space, which meets the requirements of the ordinance. The parking requirement for the car wash is one space for each employee. The applicant has noted that there would be no more than three employees at any given time on site. Therefore, three of the parking spaces would have to be accommodate parking for the employees as well. The parking spaces that are provided within the enclosed parking area do meet the required 12-foot wide and 20-foot length, meeting the township's dimensional requirements for parking. A traffic impact study was completed by Collier's Engineering with conformance of the township requirement. And I do want to note that in a February 11th, 2025 memo from Fishback, Fishback, which is the township's traffic engineer, finds that the traffic study has been completed and the plans meet the standards of the township. In addition to the site, other additions to the site, they are required to provide a loading area. They are providing a loading area to the rear of the site, noting that the applicant has noted that all deliveries and unloading will include, will occur after hours. And they've also provided a dumpster enclosure to the rear of the building, which is proposed to be screened with a masonry brick enclosure with a wooden gate. And they are providing, there is also a transformer in that same area to the rear of the site. And they are proposed to have evergreen plantings and screening to help soften the view of those mechanicals. And I do also want to point out that this, this is our landscape plan. I do want to note that there is a vegetative landscape bed that is being installed within that Telegraph Road frontage, similar to other developments that we see along Telegraph Road. The addition of some deciduous trees, as well as some decorative landscaping to kind of help buffer the view from Telegraph Road. And again, being consistent with the other developments along this corridor. Again, this, the landscape plan was reviewed and in a report dated July 17th, 2025, they conclude that the proposed landscape plan meets the intent of the zoning ordinances, but stated that there is an existing tree that may need to be replaced if it's damaged during construction. So that's something that definitely that we would monitor and watch throughout the construction. And then final two, there would be after construction, a final landscape as built. And at that time, if there was any indication, or even in the future, if there's an indication that this tree was harmed or dead, it would have to be replaced in kind. So I just want to note that. In terms of, we are taking a look at the required parking lot trees, even though the parking is covered, they are providing three parking lot trees, which are required based on the number of parking spaces provided. In terms of the building elevations and the building materials, the applicant is, the building elevations have been provided. They show a, they show a utilization of split face CMU in sterling silver, aluminum composite panels, reflective mirror and white accents in ephes. So here you can see the 3D renderings of the proposed elevations. I will say that the applicant was very mindful and very responsive to the aesthetics and design of Bloomfield Township and feel that they were very, created a design that's very modern without having a whole lot of extra coloration. It's, it's rather neutral in the design. And you can see there highlighted too, is that dumpster enclosure that I had noted. So on the right-hand side, if we're looking at this photograph, that would be the enclosed vacuum area. And then on the left-hand side, that would be the area, that would be the actual auto, auto wash location. So you can see highlighted, as I stated before, the pay stations are located, that would be the Telegraph Road frontage. You can see the extension of the building, allowing for cars to pass through and then enter into a single lane, into, enter into the car wash. As I stated earlier, the fire department has reviewed the site plan and noted in their July 7th, 2025 memo, that additional requirements that will be reviewed at the time of permit, but they have no concerns with the site plan as presented. No objections from the police department, as noted in their February 4th, 2025 memo. In engineering environmental services, in a memo dated July 16th, 2025, they recommend approval of the site plan, noting that if approval is granted, engineering plans would be required to be submitted prior to the issuance of permits. And also Hubbell Roth and Clark, who's our township engineering consultant, has reviewed the preliminary site plan with respect to water main, sanitary storm sewer, stormwater management, and they have found that the plans are adequate and they do recommend site plan approval, subject to the approval of the plans by the township board. The app, there, I got some photographs of the existing site. The, the left-hand picture shows the, the immediately adjacent neighbor to the south of the site, which would be the, the Credit Union. This is where the proposed building is essentially going to be at a zero lot line setback. But you do notice that there's approximately about, if I had to guess, about an eight-foot green, green area that would be separating the side of the building to that parking lot to the, to the south. So it's not going to be immediately adjacent up to parking, there will be a small green area there to allow for some buffering. The picture on the right-hand side is a view to, of the rear of the current Calico Corners. And then here are some photographs that you can see, this is the, in the center photograph, that's the existing access drive to the south of Calico Corners, which is proposed to be eliminated. And then the new curb cut would be located probably closer to where that Calico sign is located in that photograph on the far left. And then lastly, the picture on the right would be a view essentially from the corner of where Aldi parking lot meets the, the Calico, Calico Corner site. So with that, in terms of building and lighting, the building elevations have been provided that show the utilization of split face brick, I already read that part. They did provide a photometric plan, has been submitted, noting that wall pack lighting is proposed on the building elevations and that light poles will not exceed 20 feet in height in accordance with the township ordinances. They have provided a detailed lighting plan that confirm that they will in fact be downward shielded. As we are familiar with the site, there are no immediately adjacent residents, this is a commercial corridor along North Telegraph. The closest residential use would be on the opposite side of Telegraph Road. This did have an opportunity, I do want to note that the signs would be coming back before the design review board and likely ultimately the zoning board of appeals, as the applicant has indicated, that they are looking to reuse the existing ground sign that's located on site, as well as adding two additional signs on the higher parapet, higher points of the building, as you can see highlighted in the front, which would be the, I guess that would be the southeast highest point of that building there, would be looking to add, and as you can see highlighted on your screen in the upper photograph, the, their future intention to add some identity and some signage. And that would be, at this time, from what I've seen, two wall signs and the utilization of a ground sign. But again, a formal signage packet would be submitted to the design review board for review. And ultimately, if they proceed with the signage plan as indicated, they would be required to go to the zoning board of appeals. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. I think the, some of the 3D renderings really help show the layout of the property. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Absolutely, absolutely, I can leave it on there. So with that, I can answer any questions?
Anybody? Andrea? Yeah, go ahead.
The egress lane for the bypass that MDOT approved, how do we keep people from coming in? Is it gonna have just signage or would there be like an arm that keeps the folks from using it as an entrance point?
That's actually a very good question for the applicant, because I think that may have been, had recent, very recent conversations, this just came about pretty recently. So I believe that there is going to be an element preventing people from exiting, except in emergency only. So I guess I'd like the applicant to verify what mechanism that they're going to be using to make sure that that does not occur.
I'll ask the other question to the applicant as well.
Okay.
Okay, then the applicant, want to come on up and give us your thoughts?
Yeah, actually, this rendering doesn't have an opt-out lane, so this is an older rendering. Oh, you have a newer rendering?
I got a newer rendering on there, it's on the.
Okay. Perfect.
Should be like labeled presentation or something like that.
Okay.
Good evening, members of the planning commission, my name is Mitchell Harvey, I'm with Stonefield Engineering. With me tonight is Eric Myers, he's with Krieger Klatt, the architect on this project, as well as Stephen Barrett and Parker Adams with El Car Wash. Andrea always does such a good job going through the site plan and steals a lot of my, a lot of my thunder here. So I'm just gonna highlight a couple of things. One, I just want to say, it is a kind of unique site because it's so narrow. And now, now being a narrow site, you do have some design constraints, but we found that a car wash is actually really conducive here, because the building fits that narrow and longer configuration. So, you know, that's kind of originally what we, what we, what we found when we looked at this, is kind of a deep, narrow site, you know, a car wash should be a good use. Kind of taking it from there, we were initially doing the concepts and initial site plans, it was really a, kind of working hand-in-hand with staff, with the fire marshal, as well as MDOT, to come up with a design that works. I mean, we have 110 feet of frontage, so very narrow, and fitting things in to really make this site work from a fire safety, traffic circulation standpoint was really a challenge. And I think, you know, everybody came together and we really put our best foot forward here with this design. A few things about El Car Wash that is kind of unique, one is this enclosed vac area. So you are going to be able to vacuum, vacuum out your cars in the winter months, kind of an added amenity. We do think that the enclosed pay stations, or at least the covered pay stations, is kind of a unique feature to this site. Kind of really maintains that commercial corridor as you're going up and down Telegraph there, that we, we really felt was a good addition to the site. A few little environmental things, all soaps are fully biodegradable and environmentally friendly. The, the car wash actually uses a fairly robust water treatment plan. So there's, there's four settling tanks, a oil-water separator, and that all goes through a reverse osmosis system. So from car wash to car wash, we're actually able to reuse 90% of the water, which we, we're pretty happy with that number and we believe. of the water, which we, we're pretty happy with that number, and we believe it to be an industry leader. Beyond that, we're going to be adding some trees throughout the site. We have approximately fourteen trees that we're going to be adding. Yes, any trees that are damaged, we will absolutely replace them or pay into the tree fund, whatever that may be during construction. We're, we're fully agreeable to all that. And that, that's really it for my, my presentation. I, I want to talk about that egress drive, if you don't mind going, just stick with the rendering.
Okay, that's fine.
So, that egress drive is, is really an emergency egress-only curb cut onto Telegraph. So, that will be coned at most, at most hours of the day. Now, there is, in that covered pay station, there's going to be, that's where a worker sits. They, they work in there, they're, they're, really, they're interact with the customer and also to encourage them to buy memberships. You know, if they're just going for one car wash, you know, hey, you know, we have this membership package, this, that, and the other thing. And so, in the event, hey, they're trying to get out, that's when those cones will be removed. We also channelized that drive, if you can see a little bit, kind of bull-nosed it out there to kind of discourage that right-hand traffic. And then, of course, we'll have signage on top of all that to discourage, discourage anybody from entering the site in that fashion. That being said, we're, you know, we're permitted use here. We've, we've been working on this for, you know, the past six months, close to with staff, and we're really happy where we arrived. We're more than happy to answer any questions and go from there. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
What kind of system washes the car? Does the car, the tires rotate, or does it move on a plank?
It, the tires will rotate. It's on a track that pulls it through. Yes, sir.
You have two pay stations. I'm going to assume, the first one closer to the building is someone says, I'd like a car wash, here's my money. The one further is if someone's a member, they pull in there and the license plate is red and the gate goes up and they go right through.
Yep, so there's LPR readers. They hit your license plate, boom, you're good to go.
On this plan, can you show, I'm, I'm a little confused, which is not hard. The two pay stations, is that, that's Telegraph Road, right?
Yes.
Okay. Where's the entrance from Telegraph Road onto the property?
You can't enter the, the property from Telegraph Road.
How do you get in there?
You have to go, so you go, there's a light to the, it would be to the northwest that would take you up to Menards. You go in and there's a ring road.
There's an inner road in circulation.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, we're able to utilize that cross-access, pull that, that traffic movement off of Telegraph and utilize that ring road, similar to how MSG does.
Because that's so close to Telegraph. I was thinking to myself, that could get backed up right out to Telegraph, couldn't it?
No, no.
But you have to go in and around, in the access in there. Okay, got it.
Yeah.
The other thing is, on the way out, is there a, a system that stops the, stops the belt if it gets backed up because there's people going from the vacuums and maybe, so if some, if that's backed up in there, is there a system that stops the belt and some cars can't be, all of a sudden be shoved out and all of a sudden, there's no place to go?
On the exit, there's sensors that'll actually stop the belt if you have a car sitting there and waiting, and so you don't have the belt just feeding people into, into the cars.
Yeah, I got it, okay. Alright, yeah, that's good. Okay, you answered my, that's good. Thank you.
Thank you.
I was just gonna say, I think it's a great plan. And now, the design of it's great because it really fits into that area. I can see, take some of the cues, it looks like, from the BMW dealership. And I like the glass, the foglass on there, it looks very, you know, very forward with the design. Also, certainly thoughtful with the, the circulation, so it's not coming in off of Telegraph. It's much safer. It's not going to back up off of that area. And of course, being on the east side of Telegraph, it's not going to impact all the residents on the other side, on the, on the west side. So, overall, I just thought that it gave a lot of consideration, a lot of thought to this plan, and certainly is going to be an asset for the township.
Anybody else? Go ahead.
My question is, obviously, the parking's in the vacuum portion. So, are you vacuuming while you're in a parking space, or?
Yeah, so-
So, each parking space is where the vacuums are?
Each parking space is where the vacuums are, except for the employee spaces. But yeah, there, there are slightly wider spaces, twelve-footers you pull in, and then you have basically arms that come over and you're able to pull the vac, vacuum down or vacuum out your car mats, your, I was going to say ashtray, but there's not many of those anymore. You know, where you put your drink cup holder, kind of thing.
So, the customer does the vacuuming?
Yes, it's all customers. They're free. You know, they're done by the customer, though.
So, I agree that, obviously, the, first of all, I know what kind of work Stonefield does, and you did a great job on the site, and it is a narrow site and it's tough to deal with. I just didn't understand that the parking is the vacuum, that you park and then the vacuums are. So, I just wanted to make sure I understood that correctly.
Yeah, they're all equipped. Each parking space has a vacuum equipped with it.
So, how many parking spaces are there?
So, there's a grand total of fourteen.
So, you have eleven vacuum spaces.
Eleven vacuum spaces, three employee spaces. And one of those vacuums is ADA access per coke.
That was the only question I had. Thank you. And I just wanted to, you already answered how you're going to control, because we, we want to discourage people from coming in. First of all, it messes up the queue line.
Yep.
And then, it's a safety issue.
Yeah, it, you know, it's, no one wants anybody to come in off Telegraph. It, it screws with the circulation of the site from an operational standpoint and, you know, just from an MDOT and-
The MDOT didn't recommend some kind of an arm, or they just don't think it's necessary?
No, they were satisfied with, with coning it off and, you know, because they want to be, if someone does want to leave, they want to have that option to be able to do it relatively quickly and, you know, no permanent structures within the right of way.
Everybody has the sensors when you drive there, the arm opens, but if they don't need it, that's fine with us.
Well, suppose if, if the exit was curved to go toward, toward the flow of traffic on Telegraph, you couldn't get in from the other direction.
Yeah, and that's what we, that's what we tried to accomplish as well with our geometry of the site. You can kind of see it, maybe go back to the last one. You can kind of see it here where we have that curb that comes out. So, man, it'd be hard.
Yeah, I can, I see it.
But it would be-
I would make it much more, but.
So, if you're heading this way, this is kind of preventing you from turning in.
Yeah, right. That's what I was thinking, right.
And that was the geometry that we discussed with the MDOT.
Alright. Anybody want to make a motion?
I'm making a motion. So, I would like to recommend that the planning commission approve the site plan as approved at nineteen thirty-three Telegraph Road, that we recommend this to the township board with the following considerations: compliance with the requirements for the township departments, compliance with the requirements of the township's landscape architect, compliance with the requirements for the township's traffic consultant, and review and approval for signage by the design review board.
Support.
Moving support? I have to apologize, though, before we did, I did not open this up for public comment on this issue. Are we okay? Alright, I'm sorry. I should-
That's the three employees.
My fault. My bad. Okay, so we have a motion. We have a motion and a support. Any discussion on that motion? Then, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good plan. I like it a lot.
Great plan.
Alright, anything from the commission, anything that's not on the agenda that you'd like to bring up perhaps for future consideration?
No, thank you.
Alright, the next meeting then is on-
August fourth.
August fourth. Okay, we need a motion to adjourn then, I guess. We're done.
Motion.
Move second.
We're adjourned. Thank you all very much. Good meeting. Thank you.
There will be a meeting August-